Troy?
Let's go ahead and come to order, everyone. And let's start off today with an invocation and from Pastor Jason Vandevere. Pastor, please.
Heavenly Father, we just come before you this afternoon, and we ask, Lord, that you would just come, that you would be with us here. But we know that you are the Creator of all things. In your Son, all things consist and are held together, and yet, Lord, you see us. Lord, you see all things, and you see us, and you watch over, Lord, our small corner of creation, where you have placed men in positions of authority and leadership. And so, Lord, we pray for wisdom here. We pray for guidance. We pray for a spirit of peace. Lord, we pray that your will would be done, and we know ultimately it will on earth as it is in heaven. But we pray for now, Lord, that we would be found faithful. We pray for your hand upon all those that serve. Lord, we pray for our commissioners. We pray for all of those who serve as part of the staff here, all those in various positions in our community, our first responders. Lord, we pray for their safety, and we pray for the safety of all those here that all might come to know you. And so, Lord, we give you this time. We ask for your guidance. We ask for your continued peace. We ask for your justice and for your truth. And it's in Jesus' name that we pray.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much for those words of wisdom and grace, Pastor. Always appreciate seeing you here to help us out. Let's go ahead, and if everyone will please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, turning to the county attorney for certification of the agenda.
Yes, thank you, sir. The county attorney's office reviewed all items on the agenda, and the board has appropriate jurisdiction over these matters.
Very good. Thank you, Counselor. Commissioners, any disclosures for items on this agenda today?
I have none.
I have none. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners, and I have none either. Turning to our consent agenda, I do have a request from the Chair to remove item U, the Contract Amendment with Colorado Department of Human Services, from the consent agenda. Commissioners, would we like to hear this item separately first, prior to the rest of the consent agenda? And of course, are there any other consent agenda items to be removed from the consent agenda?
I would like to pull AK to be reviewed as well, and we could review them both before the consent agenda, if that would be your preference.
Very good, Commissioner. I think that's a good way to go. Commissioner Layden, do you have any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair, I have no additional items to remove. Thank you.
Okay. And so, let's go ahead, and let's get into item U, Contract Amendment with the Colorado Department of Human Services Behavioral Health Administration for the Children Youth Family Services Grant to fund Affirm Youth Training Workshops for Douglas County Community Response Team Clinicians, as well as community-based therapists and counselors, and weekly support groups for parents and supportive adults of LGBTQ+ youth. This amendment modifies the amount for fiscal year '24 to $18,998, a reduction of $7,899 due to Affirm Afir training availability. This amendment adds $28,497 for fiscal year '25. And do we have Maggie Cooper present to present for staff?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Laura Senkony for staff on behalf of Maggie Cooper this afternoon. Are there specific questions that I can answer for the board?
My interest, Laura, can you fill us in a little more detail than was given in the introduction by title?
Of course. So Douglas County Mental Health Initiative staff replied to a Colorado Department of Human Services Behavioral Health Administration grant. It's a state ARPA grant for behavioral health services, for filling gaps in the continuum of care services specific to family and youth. CRTs are community response teams who respond to 911 crises in the community and noncriminal substance use calls from the 911 system, as well as referrals from patrol, saw this as a need for some of the youth that they serve that identify as LGBTQ+. So the Affirm training is evidence-based training based in cognitive behavioral therapy that is specific to caregivers and individuals who work with LGBTQ+ youth. So the intent of this training is to equip the CRTs with the skills to work with LGBTQ youth specifically with mental and behavioral health concerns. And there was also an element of this proposal to have conversations with the school district to see if there were any counselors interested in going through the training. That's something that still needs to be discussed, but primarily, the training is for CRT staff.
Okay. So the Contract Amendment is with the Colorado Department of Human Services Behavioral Health Administration?
Correct.
With the grant having been provided for the Afir...
Affirm.
Affirm training, thank you so much, to be provided as otherwise described in title. But we're modifying the, we're mending the contract because we don't have training availability. So that's going to be at a lower amount, and then the $28,000 and plus is being pushed into fiscal year '25.
That's correct. The $28,000 amount is effectively a rollover from state fiscal year '24 to state fiscal year '25.
So this is not so much the, this is in a contract with the group conducting the training. This is a contract to use the money providing the grant from the state.
That's correct. There would have to be an additional contract for, to provide the training.
And is that, are we, is that something that's going to come before the board as well?
It certainly can. I believe practice is any grant funding comes before the board.
Okay. Okay. I think those are my questions right now. I'll open it to the board for questions for Laura.
Laura, I'd like to thank you for being here and bringing this before us. Before I was the county commissioner and before I was the county coroner, I was a contractor with the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment. I started a program that Colorado had received a grant from the feds for researching homicide and suicide. And what I found, while I worked on the National Violent Death Reporting System for seven years, I found that the suicide rate for individuals in the LGBTQ+ community are much higher than the rest of the population, and that's why I see so much value in this, because it sounds like the purpose of this is to train individuals that are responding, like the heart team and the CRT team, to help people in crisis. And the better trained they are to deal with individual situations, I think the more successful the program can be. So thank you for being here and working on this project.
Commissioner Layden, any questions for Assistant Director Senkony?
You know, I don't have any questions, but really appreciate the incredible work of the Douglas County Mental Health Initiative. And I would provide high praise to this Board of County Commissioners for making mental health a priority and identifying people groups that statistically have a higher incidence of suicide and mental challenges. And, you know, certainly, we were able to identify through that evidence-based practice and the research and staff that particular populations are deeply affected. One surprising one was white males between the ages of 34 and 55 have one of the highest incidents of suicidality and are deeply needing of our attention and collaboration when we can provide that in a productive way, and we have done that. Veterans are at high risk. And of course, members of the LGBTQ community, particularly youth, as Commissioner Thomas stated, are three times more likely to commit suicide and have very significant challenges. Thankfully, it's 2024, and most of our community and certainly our state is incredibly affirming and supportive of those in the LGBTQ community who can't change who they are any more than a person of color can change their skin color. It's important to continue to provide that mental health support as long as the statistics bear out that it's a vulnerable population.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. At this time, I'll go ahead and open the floor for any public testimony on this matter. Is there anyone present who would like to give public testimony? And Jill, come on forward. Jill, you're no stranger to the board, but please do, as I always ask, give us your name and tell us where you're from, ma'am.
Thank you. I want to thank the firefighters, first of all, for, oh, gosh, if there's a firefighter, I believe in it. And they fought those, that quarry five fires this last week. Beautiful job, men. And then CRT teams, Abe Layden and the Commissioners. I know Abe started the Heart Initiative, and I've supported some of you, police officers on the street, with some of it, and I don't work for anyone, but I did go on the streets three years. Yes, the males from 35 to 50 have a high suicide rate. So do women who have children or single mothers or dying children. And same with LGBT, that they can change if they want, or if they don't, that's what they determine, that's their choice. Our choices isn't that great. We have a flag that gives us the right to choose in a free country. And I applaud the CRT teams, because I think they've been to my home over 55 times. I have had my house broken and raped twice, attempted rape. It's been brutal here, and I came, I just, it's been very difficult. And I've never felt suicidal here in my new home after a divorce, but I did raise kids on ventilators, both, and by 11 and 13, they don't know their mom. They were, they were, I was in bed full-time. She had scoliosis, and I gave my life, and he worked in Latin America. Unfortunately, we're human. We're human, and we all feel desperation. We may have someone to reach out to, and I thank God for adding two additional CRT teams, even though I've supported them and the men on the streets that have cried on my shoulders who have gotten out of jail, that have no hope, that say, where do I start? I want to feed my children. I want to be with my wife, but I can't get a job. So we all, it's a time in history, the hardest time, as we're facing global challenges, wars in every nation, even our own, against our own people and for our people. So the men in badges, I applaud you for your courage. And the men who are in the air and the sea and on land. We're human beings with the determination for each one of us to live autonomous from the government. That would be great, not to have socialism. 80% of our people are supported by the government, Medicare, Medicaid, Social Systems, Social Security. And that is running dry. So when we look at what we've added to go into homes, I had an incident the other day. I had a police officer, and I'll tell you why I applaud what you've done in this community, which is unique everywhere in the nation. There's nothing like this community. Although I don't have personal friends, I do rely on people that wear badges and helmets that fight fires and have the courage to push through, the men in our generation. Let's, I've supported many men. But I had two CRT police officers come the other day. One was very large, one was small. He was forward, and I freaked out, because I'd been raped, and my dad was abusive and alcoholic. And I was suicidal, attempted seven times until they put me on drugs, hallucinatory American drugs. And that is, that's opiates.
Thank you, ma'am. Very much appreciate your comments. Is there any other member of the public who would like to give testimony on this matter? Seeing none in the room, let's go to online. Anybody joining us online? Drew, do we, Drew, huh? Troy, do we have anybody joining us online who would like to make public testimony on this matter?
Thank you, Commissioner Teal. I have no online comment.
All right. Thank you, Troy. Bringing you back to the board, what is the pleasure of the board?
I have a motion to approve item U on the consent agenda.
And I will second that motion.
All right. We have a motion and a second discussion. Well, guys, I still share, I still have grave concerns about LGBTQ+ training. I get it, this is a contract that we're doing with the Department of the State. This is a grant. This is inherently telling the state, hey, we need to modify the contract that we had before us. This is the way we want to do it. This is not necessarily with the training provider. But again, I'm having a hard time recalling the, any detailed briefing on the details of this training. So it is my intent to vote no. Further discussion?
I'll just state that having, again, been involved in research on suicide, having been the coroner and seen members of the LGBTQ community who chose to take their lives, we have the heart team, the CR team, that are responding to help these individuals find hope, and I think providing training for these individuals is in the best interest of our community.
Thank you, Commissioner. Further discussion?
You know, that deeply resonates, and I appreciate your comments, Commissioner Thomas. You know, to take this out of the realm of politics and into just reality, these kids are suffering. And in many communities, they've been disenfranchised and shunned from churches or their homes. And as a person of faith, I don't think there's anything more important we can do than demonstrate love and acceptance for those that were born in the LGBTQ community around something that is immutable and that they cannot change. Their suicidality, the research has shown, is directly correlated and linked to not necessarily their identities, but the way in which society has treated them. It has greatly improved, but the statistics still bear out. So I continue to support mental health for young people in the LGBTQ community. So I will be supportive.
Thank you, Commissioner. There is a motion and a second. Any need for further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, and the Chair does stand opposed, that therefore passes as a Contract Amendment with the Colorado Department of Human Services Behavioral Health Administration two to one. Moving along, Commissioner, you had, we do have a member of the board who requested to have item AK, Funding Agreement between Douglas County and Douglas County Community Foundation for up to $200,000 in matching donations at the Heroes Gala for the Community Emergency Relief Fund, and Kim Smith presenting for staff.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Kim Smith, representing Community Services Staff. At a work session on June 4th, 2024, the Board of County Commissioners approved a Douglas County Community Foundation request that Douglas County provide up to $200,000 to be used to match donations made at the Heroes Gala on September 13th, 2024. All contributions will be directed to their relief fund. The relief fund is intended to provide support to the Douglas County community to address emergency needs during a catastrophic event. Relief funds will provide direct assistance to our community, nonprofit partners, and first responders as they assist affected Douglas County residents. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, Kim. Any questions for Kim?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Layden, any questions for Kim?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have no questions for Kim.
I have no questions. I mean, based on the numerous briefings we received, based on the fact that, you know, emergency relief is, obviously, we have members of our Douglas County Sheriff's Department up front here. You know, folks, just to let you guys know, statutorily, it is the Douglas County Sheriff and the Douglas County Sheriff's Department that is charged statutorily with providing emergency response. But when the emergency is over with, let's say it's the flood of 65, you know, there does come a time where the Sheriff's Department is stood down, but there's still stuff to be done. That's called the recovery phase. And it is the Douglas County Board of County Commissioners that statutorily are directed, are required to handle emergency recovery. So based on the fact, and I'm reading through the staff memo right now, and once again, it is affirmed, that this donation is going to go to the Community Foundation for Emergency Relief Fund. I see that perfectly in keeping with the statutory requirements placed upon the Board of County Commissioners, and I'm really glad we've got some partners in the Community Foundation to help us out with it. So thanks, Kim, but I got no questions. I think I know what I'm doing on this one. One more call for questions from the board for, for Kim? Well, let's go ahead and open the floor for any community testimony from the public. If there's anyone in the room that would like to step forward and give testimony on this matter, please raise your hand. Let me know. Jill, come on forward. And of course, Jill, I just said a few minutes ago, but please do give us your name and tell us where you're from, ma'am.
I think I can kind of gather that this is, you know, a pocket like a deposit into a bank kind of thing. I think the better thing is to spend the money now with different kind of organizations or give it to the police department. I mean, we funded them $50,000 for the crisis with immigration. I thought, how ridiculous. And the firefighters. I just think sometimes, yes, we need resources, but we need to buy now the resources in store and not put it into a bank and then know that with all the wars and the global supply chain that you're trying to find the right resources. So I think it would be a community thing to kind of figure out, you know, like, resources? Is it water, food, clothing, shelter? Supporting our water initiatives. When it breaks, we're giving it to the police department or the fire department. When you have quarry fire, almost jumped that Deer Creek Road, incredible firefighting. Did you guys even read what they did? Snakes and bears, and they had 50-pound packs in 100-degree weather, climbing up hills and then burn an entire area to protect our homes. I don't think we lost one firefighter. And then on the Pueblo South, both South Metro firefighters helped on the Pueblo, and then we had Boulder lost 40 homes and SS Park Lodge. And we used the airway, and people were doing drones. And so where are we really? The 200,000 is a lot of money when you're kind of like grasping for something when you need water. So I think spend it now and prepare now, not in a bank account if that's what it is. If you have a plan now, and then you spend now for it, prepare water, food, shelter. We have lots of threats. We've got the highest terrorist threat in our country right now, and they're killing, if you didn't read the Trandea Regra in Denver and New York, they're instructed, food supply chain has been taken over by the Trandea Regra, and they're instructed to kill Denver police officers and New York. I have not read anymore. We've got the biggest terrorist threat from bolt typhoon, China, and Sandworm. Good thing Ukraine broke that barrier, but Russia bombed cities in their own cities. This is a volatile time, and I don't know if we've lost police officers, but I certainly like the strength of men in my life that can fight fires like that. And we say, if we have a feminist approach, that we can do it. Well, we're men and women of God, and like I said, we can be prepared, we can have gold in a pocket in a hill, or we can prepare now for the biggest threat in our nation, which is what we should afford the police officers, like 150,000 that, and then work with 50,000 get donations, but give it to our great men who will stand and fight fires and bears and snakes with 50 pounds and 100-degree weather. My gosh, who are these men? I say they have come from God to protect the city of God, not the city of gold. So that is my preference, is to give it to the good men, because I don't want to use a gun, and I don't want my house burned down. I like my life, and we do have, we want to keep their families safe as well. I think that would be appropriate.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Very much appreciate your comments. Is there anyone else who would like to give public testimony on this matter? And seeing none in the room, Troy, do we have anyone online who would like to give public testimony on this matter?
I have no online comments, sir.
Thank you, Troy. Appreciate it. Bringing it back to the board for action, is there a motion to approve this funding agreement between Douglas County and Douglas County Community Foundation?
If I could just make a comment first, and I had this pulled, because I just would like to register my vote that while I support DCCF and the work that they do, I think it's inappropriate to provide $200,000 in tax dollars to this event, and that's why I asked that it be pulled.
Well, thank you, Commissioner. Further comments?
Mr. Chair, I'm pleased to make a motion, and I'll speak in favor of the motion.
Just for clarity, Commissioner, is that a motion to approve the agreement between Douglas County and Douglas County Community Foundation as introduced by title?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I'll make a motion to approve the funding agreement between Douglas County and the Douglas County Community Foundation for up to $200,000 in matching donations at the Heroes Gala for the Community Emergency Relief Fund.
That is heard. Is there a second?
A second for decorum.
Okay. There is a motion and a second. Any discussion?
So if I could speak in favor of the motion, Mr. Chair, you know, the reason that it's so important, and there is actually a rationale for why we partner here, and I think you spoke to it well, which is, we are in the business of protecting the health, safety, and welfare of nearly 400,000 citizens. We do not take that responsibility casually. You know, as the founder and chair of the Wildfire Action Collaborative, we know that the number-one potential threat and risk to our county is the threat of wildfire. We saw in the Marshall Fire that within a matter of weeks, the Boulder Community Foundation was able to gather tens of millions of dollars in donations to address the immediate needs of those who had been displaced from their homes. I hope none of us ever sees the day when a horrible wildfire ravages our county, but we are doing our level best to be prepared for a crisis like that. Commissioner Thomas and I both served during the STEM shooting, an unforeseen crisis that affected our community, and we immediately partnered to address school security at that time. So we know that crisis will come and affects our community, and our role is to be prepared. The specific reason I am in support of the county providing this partnership match for emergency relief to the Community Foundation is because of the matching opportunity. As a government, we cannot solicit donations from the private sector in the same way that would double or even triple the investment that we've made. We've invested in helicopters. We invest in emergency management and public safety more than any other county in the state. But it's, it's not quite as easy for us to go out to the public and say, would you match that contribution? This $200,000 will double through this contribution and the fundraising efforts of the Community Foundation. So, you know, if you're somebody that wants to see your money grow and not stay stagnant, this is a great opportunity to do that, to see 200,000 become 400,000 or more for emergency relief in our community. So that is the basis for this, and I will be in support.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'll speak in favor of the motion. And Jill, I do want to address your comments, because I did hear the initial question prior to your remaining comments. I don't know, I agree with this approach. I get it. Why don't we just give it to the first responders? Well, because we still have an obligation to deal with the recovery piece. When our first responders, they have taken care of the emergent situation, they've cleared the scene, well, we still have that responsibility to provide for recovery. When we talk about, and you know, Commissioner Layden made a really good point, that, you know, we still have statutory requirements when engaging with the private sector. By going ahead and giving this money to the Community Foundation, making sure this is dedicated, there are a couple of things it does. First and foremost, it becomes a part of their financial portfolio moving forward to provide that relief within the community, which, there's a whole lot more that the Community Foundation does than just disaster recovery. This becomes their financial portfolio. So even though it's in a bank account and it's not being touched, it allows them to leverage forward on the things that they're doing literally today, today, every week in this community. community. That is along the social services relief area where, I don't know, I have philosophical doubts that the state, namely government, should really be playing in every facet, but charity within our community absolutely should. Secondly, we're doing this year over year. We need to reconsider if we're going to continue doing this when we hit the five-year mark because by that time, we've got a million dollars in the Disaster Recovery Fund. Okay. Anybody who has a million dollars in your bank account, I hope you appreciate it because it's something that not every one of us have. But the bottom line is that then gives financial capability just from the interest earned off of that disaster relief fund that can allow expanding the operations of our Community Foundation. Well, listen, my twenty years in business, I'll confess, I wasn't a finance guy. I was really an operations guy. I was in IT, I was in software. But I've had so many projects that I had to work with the finance guys to make sure that I could get my projects funded. I get the clue of being able to leverage forward a positive financial portfolio. And then lastly, the reason why this is a good idea is because the Community Foundation can act in hours what even us, a really nimble, fast-moving, local government agency, it still takes us days. We are still statutorily regulated. We have to follow certain steps and those don't always happen in minutes and seconds. Those do tend to happen in days, weeks. So I feel good about this. I know we've had the detail planning come before, the board before. Maybe that's something that has not been provided to the public and maybe we should consider doing something a little more public-facing with the Community Foundation in order to talk about how these funds will be used in the event of disaster. Because Jill, you made a really great point about what happened with the wildfires. Hey, that recovery, you know, the firefighters have gone home, the land has been damaged, people are moving in. But the bottom line is that recovery is still going on in Jeffco, Laramie County, Boulder County, and thankfully, it's those county commissioners that have those tasks before them today and not us. So I do speak in favor of the motion and urge us, urge my colleagues to consider passing. Is there any other comments in discussion at this time? No, 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 Jill. You're going to make me preach through this again. You come on, public comment is closed. Time for us to do our work. If there is no further discussion on the board, we do have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Any opposed?
I'm opposed. No.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Layden, I thought I heard something, but maybe the technology got in our way. Please vote again, please.
Sure, I'll do that one more time. Aye.
In favor?
Aye, in favor, yes.
Thank you, Commissioner. Apologies, the technology is not cooperating on our end very well. That's a vote of two to one and the funding agreement passes. At this time, it's time for us to consider our full consent agenda with items U and AK removed. What is the pleasure of the board?
I have a motion to approve the requests in all items A through T, V through AJ, and AL through AM. U and AK have been already considered.
And I will second that motion.
Okay. There's a motion and a second. Any need for discussion on the remaining consent items?
I have none.
All in favor say aye.
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 And no opposed, consent agenda is adopted. Moving to our regular agenda. Let me just check my notes, folks. All right. So our first item on our regular agenda is item A, adoption of ordinance number O is an Oscar, zero-two-four-zero-zero-three, an ordinance for the regulation of traffic and parking, repealing all ordinances and resolutions in conflict therewith and providing penalties for violation thereof, first reading. And I have Sergeant Jeffrey Burke, Douglas County Sheriff's Office presenting.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I appreciate the opportunity to be in front of you today. Like the Commissioner said, Sergeant Jeff Burke with the Douglas County Sheriff's Office. I'm assigned to the Patrol Division. A little bit of history, in 2020, the board had adopted the previous published model traffic code from the Colorado Department of Transportation. That was, at that time, the first update in ten years. The Colorado Department of Transportation has updated that model traffic code again in 2024, only being a four-year gap this time, largely a lot to do with a lot of crime reclassifications, things being reduced, things being increased, as well as the bond reform bills that have occurred over the last couple of years. So CDOT published that just a couple of months ago, the new model traffic code. What I have before you now is a request to adopt that 2024 model traffic code to replace the 2020 version that was previously adopted four years ago. Barring any questions from the board.
Thank you, Sergeant. Questions from the board for Sergeant Burke?
Sergeant Burke, I'd like to thank you for all the work you do heading the traffic unit. We've had a lot of serious traffic accidents, crashes, fatalities, and you've been involved in all of them. So thank you for what you do for our community because everybody drives a car and so everybody comes into your purview. I printed off all of that ordinance last night to understand it. And what I really see in here is that there are a lot of zones in the county that have been identified because of things like pickup and drop-off of schools that cause hazards where kids can get hurt. And I think there's four pages of those here. I really see the value in that. And so if you'd just like to talk about what that is so it's on the record, I would appreciate it.
Absolutely, Commissioner. Towards, part of this ordinance does deal with parking and specifically residential or private parking locations in which a permit is required to be able to park a vehicle on those. And all of those, I should say, the large ninety-five percent of those locations outlined in ordinance are around schools, specifically, as the Commissioner pointed out, to increase the amount of safety we have for the children within our community. There is processes in place to have communities added to those. So those that are listening, if you choose to have those or think that is warranted in your area, that can be brought up through the Engineering Department at the county. And then with cooperation, the Sheriff's Office, that is discussed and brought forward to the board. But those permitted areas are outlined in two exhibits in the back of the ordinance, Exhibit A and Exhibit B. Exhibit A addresses public property or public streets essentially. Exhibit B is private property locations like rec centers and things like that. Whereas if those permits are not obtained, then it gives the authority to the Douglas County Sheriff's Office to enforce those parking regulations to those non-permitted vehicles in those areas where they should not be parked.
Thank you for that explanation. And I believe it's Lieutenant Stanton behind you?
Yes.
And I don't know who the other individual is.
Sergeant O'Hara.
Thank you for being here. You guys really provide a lot of needed services in the county and head that unit. So thank you for what you do. Thank you for the opportunity to have them explain what this is.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Layden, any questions for the Sergeant? Okay. Commissioner, if we're having technical difficulties, do feel free to jump in again. I guess I only have a couple of questions for the Sergeant. Gosh, there was a day when I was answering questions from Sergeants, but... So Sergeant, the title of this ordinance speaks to the fact that it's taking the place of prior ordinances and resolutions. Is this a consolidation of several different resolutions and ordinances that we've had before?
No, Commissioner. It is specifically a replacement of the ordinance in 2020, zero-two-zero-dash-zero-zero-one, specifically replacing that ordinance with this ordinance.
Okay. And based upon those CDOT changes that you spoke of earlier?
Yes, Commissioner.
Okay, cool. So you guys, we're not burdening you guys with another document to memorize and make sure that you're enforcing out on the street?
Absolutely not. We are all familiar, already familiar with the contents of this. It's just getting the newest version adopted by the board.
Okay. Because the last thing I ever want to do is burden you guys with conflicting documents and stuff like that. If you ever find that with an ordinance, any set of ordinances that we have on the books, believe me, I'm an email away. I want to know about it. I want to make sure that we've got things streamlined for you guys to do your job, keep us all safe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Just making sure, Commissioner Layden, any questions for the Sergeant? Okay. None heard. Okay. Well, if, any other questions, Commissioner Thomas?
I have none. Again, I appreciate what you do and being prepared to be here today. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Let's go ahead and open the floor for public testimony. Is there anyone who would like to come forward and give public testimony on this ordinance? Jill, come on forward. Jill, you're going to hear me say it every time you raise your hand. Please give us your name and tell us where you're from, ma'am.
So it looks like you signed the last one, George. Did you know that? Your signature's on the ordinance of the zero-zero-one, so probably a good thing to pass it today. That's great. Thank you.
Thank you, Jill. Always appreciate your comments, ma'am. And yes, I did, I get to sign this one too, I believe. Okay. Troy, anyone, excuse me, anyone else in the room would like to give public testimony on this ordinance? Okay. Seeing none. Troy, going to those joining us online, would anybody like to give public testimony on this ordinance?
I have no online comment.
Thank you, Troy. Bringing it back to the board for action, what is the board's pleasure?
I have a motion to approve an adoption of ordinance number zero, I'm sorry, O-dash-zero-two-four-zero-zero-three, an ordinance for the regulation of traffic and parking, repealing of all ordinances and resolutions in conflict therewith, and providing penalties for violation thereof on first reading.
That is, the motion is heard. Commissioner Layden, I did see you take off your microphone, but I apologize, Commissioner, we cannot hear, the chair cannot hear you. I will provide that second and open the floor for discussion among the board. Any need for discussion?
I have none.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Layden, you want to try that microphone again if you have any items of Commissioner Layden, we're just not hearing anything in the room. I'm going to speak in favor of the motion. I think this is, I like the fact that we're going to keep this updated. Sergeant, if you didn't like it, you should have said something, but that's not what I heard from you, so I will be very much in favor of voting on this ordinance on first reading. Any other discussion? Okay. There is a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Heard. Thank you, Commissioner. The ordinance is approved on first reading with none dissenting. And we will let the public know when the second reading of this ordinance is. And Sergeant, we hope you're here to once again come back for the second reading.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, gentlemen. Very much appreciate it. Commissioner?
That'll be September tenth.
Thank you very much, counsel. September tenth for the second reading. All right. Item B is a motion, excuse me, item B is an intergovernmental, blah, blah. Item B is an intergovernmental agreement regarding joint management of Proposition 123 funding and credits. Stephen Dodgerl, Dodgerl, Community Programs Administrator for Department of Community, Department of Community Development, presenting. Stephen, once again, welcome to the mangled name club. Apologies.
Quite all right, Commissioner. Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Stephen Dodgerl representing Community Development. The request before you today is the approval of the intergovernmental agreement regarding joint management of Proposition 123 funding and credits. The IGA participants collaborating with Douglas County to fulfill this commitment of Proposition 123 include the City of Castle Pines, the City of Lone Tree, the Douglas County Housing Partnership, Town of Castle Rock, and Town of Parker. Proposition 123 is meant to increase the production of affordable housing units and support homeless services. Initiative allocates point one percent of Colorado's income tax revenues to help essential workers buy homes and to support local governments in increasing affordable housing by three percent each year, aiming to increase nine percent over three years. The American Community Survey from 2017 to 2021 was utilized to establish the baseline of four thousand eight hundred and twenty affordable for-sale homes and rental units within unincorporated Douglas County. During the September twelfth business meeting, the Board of County Commissioners approved a resolution to participate in Proposition 123 funding. Each municipal partner, including the county, have filed a commitment with the Division of Housing to establish a baseline number of affordable housing units within their respective jurisdictions and to affirm their commitment to increase affordable housing by three percent each year for the next three years. The county's commitment to develop nine percent more affordable housing units within unincorporated Douglas County would be four hundred and forty, four hundred and thirty-four units over the next three years. The IGA emphasizes the commitment to develop a diverse range of affordable housing options. This is in recognition of the growing need for affordable housing for residents with earned income that is insufficient to secure quality housing in reasonable proximity to their workplace to include workforce housing. Additionally, it recognizes the need for vulnerable populations within all of Douglas County, including veterans, older adults, children, and individuals with disabilities, among others, for a safe and affordable place to call their home. Under this agreement, the Douglas County Housing Partnership is authorized to seek state affordable housing funds for local projects with the stipulation that any funding requests be approved by the Housing Partnerships Board and the relevant municipal's representatives. The IGA also includes provisions for a policy to distribute surplus development credits. This policy aims to help as many jurisdictions as possible meet their affordable housing commitments, thereby maintaining their eligibility for future funding. Recommendations for allocations of their surplus fundings will be presented to the governing bodies of the municipal members for direction before the final decision is made. The decision-making process requires a majority vote by the Housing Partnerships Board. In addition to managing funds and credits, the Housing Partnership is responsible for tracking affordable housing products and ensuring compliance with Proposition 123 To date, the county has benefited from over nine million dollars in Proposition 123 funding, which includes one point five million dollars for the Down Payment Assistance Program, four point one million dollars for the Talltale Ranch IDD Inclusive Housing Project, and three point four million dollars for the Ridge Gate Senior Housing Project. It is staff's recommendation that the Board of County Commissioners approve the intergovernmental agreement regarding joint management of Proposition 123 funding and credits. Thank you very much. And staff, both here for the county and for the Douglas County Housing Partnership, are available if you have any questions.
Thank you, Stephen. Does the board have any questions for Stephen at this time?
Stephen, I'd just like to clarify.
What?
I'm sorry.
Oh, I was just going to say, I don't have any questions. And maybe let's briefly pause and ensure the tech is working. I was chatting offline with Troy and it sounds like we may have gotten the switch worked out.
Yeah, you're coming through just fine now, Commissioner, but so I think whatever you did, you fixed it.
Okay. Great. No questions for me.
Commissioner?
Stephen, I think I understand that over the next three years, if we sign this, we need to have just over a thousand units in all of Douglas County. And in unincorporated Douglas County, we're responsible for...
Four hundred and thirty-four.
Four thirty-four. It sounds like from the Housing Partnership meetings I've attended that we are on track to make those.
That's correct, yes.
Just the senior housing that is being put together especially, that is really needed here because of the older adult listening sessions that Commissioner Teal is hosting, we really have heard that over and over. And so I think that's what's really important is that Ridge Gate Senior, Shea has finished the Audrey and is starting the Sophia. And there's another discussion that the Housing Partnership is part of with Champion Bank. So I think there's lots of good opportunities for seniors to find some affordable housing here in the future. And I think that this Proposition 123 money, well, it's funded with our Tabor refunds. It was passed by the public. And so it's a good thing for us to take advantage of those opportunities for those residents that can use it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I don't think I have any questions for you right now, Stephen. Again, very much consistent with the prior briefings that the board has had. I'd be happy to hear from the Housing Partnership leadership at this time. And seeing Maria stand up, Maria, come right up to the podium. Please do. And give us, you get to choose.
Okay.
But... But do you give us your name? Do you introduce your organization? And please, share your, share your, share your presentation.
Thank you. Maria Chano, Executive Director from the Douglas County Housing Partnership. Thank you for presenting this today, and I think that our work together with our jurisdictions to come together and create this intergovernmental agreement is another great example of how well Douglas County does partnerships and how we work together to achieve our goals. So this has been a very interesting and exciting process, and I want to say thank you for you all working together and for staff helping to put this together, and I'm happy to answer any questions or provide additional details if there's anything else that you'd like me to talk about.
All right, board questions for Maria.
Maria, not a question. Just sitting on your board, I see the amazing work that you do. Stephen, Jennifer, Jennifer, you really understand this topic and have a passion for it, so thank you for what you're doing for our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Layden, any questions for Maria?
Thank you, Chair. No questions, but I would echo those sentiments. I've been on the board of the Housing Partnership, and, you know, Douglas County just got ranked number one large county in the country for healthiest county, and we've long been the healthiest county in the state. One of those metrics that is challenging for us is workforce housing, housing affordability, and, you know, with the median home price of $800,000, it's, it's difficult for young families to figure out a way to, to build wealth and get into something that they own. So I have also witnessed your amazing work and greatly appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Maria, I'm going to let you off easy. I was on your board before Commissioner Thomas and I kind of switched out, and when the Proposition 123 plan was first being considered, so I think I'm fully versed on it, so very much appreciate your willingness to come for us with your presentation.
Of course. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, at this time, we'd like to ask if there's any members of the public who would like to give testimony on this intergovernmental agreement between the Douglas County and the Housing Partnership. Is there anyone who would like to, Jill, come on forward. Once again, please, give us your name, tell us where you're from. You'll have three minutes.
Great presentation. Lots of information in that. That was really nice. You know, like, I'm just going to go right to the meat of it. He said 40 million has been preliminary approved, but we have 10 million waiting, and I don't know if it looks like on here, Jared Polis' the deadlines, have you seen the deadlines for the 10 million approval for housing? It's, I think it's coming up in August, September. These are deadline, I'll, I can show it to you afterwards if you don't already know. It's another 10 million. But they have done equity, concessionary, and banking for these housing units, and I'll go right to what we've already done. They've approved, which is a total of $40 million, a preliminary, preliminary, sorry, I do speak English sometimes, and sometimes Chinese and sometimes French, preliminarily approved for six recipients. Final award details will be determined during the underwriting process for each project. And Grove Apartments in Denver, three, four, 3.5 million, 3.6, sorry, 3.7 million. Grove Conifer, 5.8 million. Aurora Campus, 15 million. Black Canyon Flats, 8 million. Tails, Talltails Ranch in Lone Tree, 4.1 million, and Woodbury Park Apartments in Craig, Colorado, 2.7 million. They've already approved for 96 units. So as you presented that, that's already been done. I was just wondering how much we've already, with that kind of grant, how many units do we add with what you presented on that last slide? I didn't see accountability for the housing comparatively to the funding. So, but when you're looking at funding for housing, definitely, I think that was one of what I read in Ohio, just, or, sorry if I get it wrong, where John Deere is. They moved it to Mexico. John Deere or some big facility that, you know, corporate wants more money all the time, but eliminated jobs, and also a wood, sorry, I don't know the Middle East states very much, but I think somewhere Nebraska, Iowa area, they had a beautiful machinery to cut wood, and it actually would qualify the kind of wood that a house would need. So if you put it through, it would say, also a big, big facility that the men and some women, I'm sure, were running, but they didn't have housing. Housing was 50 miles away from this thing, so they've shut it down. We also had things in, I think Idaho, if you didn't see the, the water project, the water priority went to a small community that was prioritized for less than the, the good technology that those farmers had that eliminated many, many jobs. So it, when you have farming, you take away fertilizer, fertilize, and technological, and trucking, and tractor companies right there in the community. So yes, essentially, to get housing affordable.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your, appreciate your testimony. Is there anyone else who would like to give public testimony on this agreement? And seeing none in the room, turning to our online. Troy, do we have anyone online who would like to give public testimony on this agreement?
Thank you, Commissioner. No online comment.
Very good. Thank you, Troy. At this time, bringing you back to the board for action. What is the pleasure of the board?
I have a motion to approve an intergovernmental agreement regarding joint management of Proposition 123 funding and credits between Douglas County Housing Partnership, City of Castle Pines, City of Lone Tree, Town of Castle Rock, Town of Parker, and Douglas County.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay, there's a motion, a second, any discussion? I'll just say, I didn't vote for Proposition 123. I didn't think it was a good idea. I thought the, the private sector could provide everything we needed. Once we started this process, we found that the private sector is mostly providing everything we need. However, I do agree with using these funds, because it's allowing us really to make our money go further. And I'll tell you what, Commissioner Thomas mentioned it, among our older adults, our seniors in the community, there's a real need for us to be putting a little bit of our foot forward so that these folks can get affordable housing when they've lived here for sometimes 30, 40 years. So I'll be in favor. Any further discussion? Okay, there's a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, and that passes, this intergovernmental agreement passes 3-0. All right, our next item on the regular calendar is a construction contract with Wholesome WCR for the West Frontage Road relocation project in the amount of $9,148,080.81 for Douglas County, project number CI 2020015, Brolin Bundy, PE, capital improvements, project manager for staff.
Hold on one second, Commissioners. Not, right here. I just kind of going back to the, the whole list. I don't even see the list for the, all the presentations. Let's try the mouse over that one. Oh, no. Okay, there you go. Right there. Okay, and then we can go. There you can start. There it is. All right, thank you.
All right, good afternoon, Commissioners. Brolin Bundy, CIP project manager with Public Works Engineering. I'm here to present on the construction contract with Wholesome WCR for the West Frontage Road relocation project, CI 2020-015. We started the bid process in June. The bid documents were advertised on Rocky Mountain BidNet on June 3, 2024. We received seven bids, and we opened them on July 2 of 2024. I won't read all the, of the seven bids, but I will point out to the engineer's estimate, we, our engineer's estimate was 12.4 million, and we received some very favorable bids for us during that competitive bidding process. The project includes a relocation of the existing West Frontage Road from the east side of the BNSF Railroad to the west, west side. This will include one lane in each direction with a median to provide access to parcels located on the west side of the railroad tracks. Additionally, there will also be some construction on Toma Road and Bear Dance Drive. This will include minor widening of Toma Road to include a left turn lane and a mill and overlay of the existing pavement. Realignment of Bear Dance, Bear Dance Drive to line up with the relocated West Frontage Road, and on Bear Dance, that will include a left turn lane, a through lane, and a right turn lane. This project is needed to accommodate the Crystal Valley Interchange Project. Crystal Valley Interchange requires closing portion of the existing I-25 West Frontage Road between Toma Road and Yucca Hills to build the proposed southbound I-25 exit and entrance ramps over the top of the existing I-25 West Frontage Road. The schedule for this project, we anticipate an notice to proceed to the contractor of, on September 9 of 2024, with a contract length of 365 days. The contract amount is $9,148,080.81, and funds for this project are set aside in Fund 230, Business Unit 80129. So, staff, we recommend the approval of the construction contract with Wholesome WCR for the West Frontage Road relocation project. I'm here to answer any questions, or if you have any comments.
Thank you, sir. Questions from the board for Brolin?
I do have a question, and I know Art can answer this. I don't know if you can. When did Douglas County start buying right-of-way to start this project? Do you know?
In some of the work that I've been doing, early 2000s, so like 2005, 2006, 2007 timeframe is when initial right-of-way acquisitions, acquisitions started taking place.
When I became a Commissioner in 2017, Art told me all about this project and buying all the right-of-way, and it is now 2024, and we are maybe going to get started. And this is a great example of how government goes slow, because there's so many different things that need to be considered and to get handled. So thank you for bringing this forward, and I'm impressed that you knew those dates, so good job. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Layden, any questions for Brolin?
No, Brolin, nice job. No questions for me.
Brolin, really, my only real question, is this the first time that you've been before us to present an item?
I was here a couple of years ago on another smaller construction contract.
Okay, okay. Thank you for clarifying that. As some people know, I know a whole lot about this project and the bigger interchange projects, so you didn't contradict anything I thought I knew, so I have no questions for you right now. I appreciate it. At this time, we'd like to open the floor for any public testimony on this construction contract. Is there anyone who would like to give public testimony? Jill, come on forward. Same thing, name, where you're from, ma'am.
Are you the wholesome, wholesome, are you the owner of the company? Is that who you're presenting? I was looking you guys up. You're like the leading in the, whoever's doing this contract, wholesome WCR, is that correct? Looks like you're the leading innovation and construction, so great, good job. Looking forward to see what you do. Look at the connection between Germany and I think it was another country. They're doing underwater bridge. I don't even know how you guys sustain one bridge, but they're doing it underwater like eight.
Incredible. Put that up.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your testimony. Anyone else like to give public testimony on this construction contract? Seeing none in the room, let's turn to the online. Troy, do we have anyone online who would like to give public testimony on this construction contract?
Thank you, sir. I have no online comment.
Thank you, ma'am. Turning it back to the board for action. How would we like to dispose of this construction contract for the West Frontage Road?
Mr. Chair, I'm pleased to make a motion to approve a construction contract with Wholesome WCR for the West Frontage Road relocation project in the amount of $9,148,080.81. Douglas County, project number CI 2020-015.
Second.
All right, there's a motion, a second. Any discussion? I hope nobody will mind if I say, per Commissioner Thomas's comments and question and answers provided to her questions earlier, it's about time. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
And there are none opposed, the construction contract is approved unanimously. All right, go get them, guys. Let's get that done. All right, our next item is an amended and restated intergovernmental agreement between the Town of Castle Rock and Douglas County for the Highway 85 wastewater collection and treatment system in the amount of $14 million. Dan Avery, Special Projects Manager, presenting.
Question of the, of being a little past time for the 230 Planning Commission, Land Use Hearing, I will move quickly. I am pleased to present two American Rescue Plan Act-funded intergovernmental agreements for the design and construction of water and wastewater investments on the Highway 85 corridor. This is part of the Board of County Commissioners' larger spending plan for our American Rescue Plan Act funds. This, these proposals will bring spending in the water and wastewater category to nearly 60% of our overall ARPA investments. Back in the fourth quarter of 2021, the Board of County Commissioners began soliciting water and wastewater proposals for the use of this funding, and in the first and second quarters of 2022, began its due diligence and fact-finding public workshops. Rounding out the second part of 2022, the board focused on the Highway 85 corridor and began coordination with affected water and wastewater providers. In early 2023, the board approved funding agreements with Louviers Water and Sanitation, Sedalia Water and Sanitation, Dominion Water and Sanitation for its Waterton Road water line, and Castle Rock Water in conjunction with Dominion Water and Sanitation for wastewater service proposal on the corridor. That initial proposal requested that Castle Rock Water and Dominion identify the most cost-effective and beneficial means to provide wastewater treatment to the corridor. There was three initial alternatives identified, and upon conclusion of the conceptual design process, Dominion and Castle Rock Water came back to the county recommending a proposal that was largely consistent with the Diamondback Study that the county had commissioned back in 2018 and 2019. That Diamondback Study called for a two-part wastewater solution on the corridor, one that would provide service to the Sedalia area with flows returning to Plume Creek Water Reclamation Plant, and another for the Louviers area that would provide wastewater service towards the north. The Diamondback Study was a broad effort involving many stakeholders, and we are pleased that that study is what's being moved forward. Here's an overview of the two projects together. You can see the Southern Highway 85 proposal on the lower right-hand side of the screen, and the Northern Highway 85 proposal at the top. I will introduce representatives of both Castle Rock Water and Dominion Water and Sanitation for presentations of their respective pieces, beginning with Mark from Castle Rock Water.
Let's, let's just pause real quick, Dan. Any questions for Dan before we proceed to Representatives Castle Rock Water and Dominion? Questions from the board?
I have none.
Thank you, Commissioner.
You know, I don't have any questions, but, you know, I think it's important to take a moment and pause and just express our gratitude to county staff and specifically Dan Avery for the incredible work for years on this ARPA funding and COVID funding. These, this item and the next item before us, it's significant. These are, it's representing tens of millions of dollars. That really is the conclusion of a very long process with our regional partners to identify a water wastewater solution in this area. And having recently been in Louviers and hearing directly from citizens, you know, at their kitchen table, how important it is to them that they will now have clean water instead of water contaminated with radium. This is a big deal, and I think the, the larger water wastewater concepts being presented today will create the infrastructure for significant economic the infrastructure for significant economic development in the future. So I can't express my gratitude enough to not only county staff, but obviously all of our great partners, including those who are about to speak now. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no questions for you, Dan. I know a little bit about this one, so let's turn to Mr. Marlowe. Mr. Marlowe, your comments, please.
It's great to be here to talk to you guys about this. Been a long time in coming. Obviously, we started looking at this, I think, back in 2014, so it's been a long time. So I'm pretty excited to present this real quick. I'll go over this quickly. You guys are very familiar with this project, so bottom line is Castle Rock is looking to help with this wastewater solution for the Highway 85 corridor. We're looking at the Sedalia portion south to the Plum Creek Water Reclamation Authority, where we own capacity that we will utilize to help provide that service for this area, Sedalia and to the south. And of course, going to be working very closely with some of the key stakeholders in that area, Core Electric, of course, being one of those, Douglas County School District, Cherokee Castle potentially, Town of Sedalia, of course, and then obviously many property owners down in that area that are looking to do some things. There's some great benefits to this, of course, as you guys know. We're going to be looking at improving water quality in Chatfield Reservoir, which is a primary drinking water source for many people in Douglas County. We're going to be obviously cleaning up septic tanks along the corridor that are contributing to pollution issues in Plum Creek, so that's a great thing. I'm pretty excited about potential opportunities for primary employment and high-quality economic development along that Highway 85 corridor, which is a great corridor from a transportation standpoint in connection up to obviously the Denver area. And then, of course, one of the things we're very excited about is it'll help us keep reusable water supplies in Douglas County, so be able to capture those and bring them back, provide some economies of scale for water and wastewater services, and help out some existing employers as well. Project details for this one, we've got a piece of property down there in Sedalia. We're looking to put a lift station on, 600,000 gallons per day capacity. It's almost 3,000 single-family equivalents. Obviously, as I said, we'll provide capacity in our Plum Creek Water Reclamation Facility. We're going to use a design-build process for this to try to get this done quickly and on time. We want to get this done by the end of 2026. Obviously, key components of the agreement, Douglas County will be bringing 14, up to $14 million in American Rescue Plan Act funding. Douglas County will own the lift station in Forest Main until people connect, and then capacity will transfer to Castle Rock as we take over operations of that. Obviously, Douglas County makes all the land use decisions, connection decisions. We will return system development fees to Douglas County for especially new development, where they pay those fees, and those fees can either be reinvested in additional sewer infrastructure in the corridor or other things, as you guys like and determine. Castle Rock Water will provide retail service down to Sedalia, charge a 10% extra territorial surcharge. Obviously, we're going to give people credit for reusable water supply if they can bring that to the table. And new development, we want to see if we can get them connected on renewable water supplies as opposed to Denver Basin groundwater. And that's it. I'm happy to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Thank you, Director Marlowe. Questions for Director Marlowe from the board?
Thank you, Mr. Marlowe, for that presentation. Did you say when you think this project will be completed, when you'll have it completed? I missed it if you did.
Yes, yes, Commissioner, that's a great question. I did, but I went over it very quickly, so we will have this done by the end of 2026.
Okay. I have no other questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Layden, any questions for Mr. Marlowe?
No, I don't think I have additional questions, but I think this signifies an ongoing partnership with our, with municipalities that are doing great things in the county, specifically Castle Rock. You know, we obviously just partnered on Lost Canyon and other, you know, really important endeavors that I think greatly benefit those we collectively serve. So I do like seeing the continued oversight of the county on these important funds. I don't think they're intended to benefit anyone other than the citizens that we jointly serve, so I don't have any additional questions.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate it. So Dan, we'll go then to Dominion to speak to their portion, even though that is our next item. Is that the plan?
We can take this in whatever way you'd like. I can certainly introduce the Dominion agreement next if you prefer.
Okay, well, let's do that. So Mark, hey, for once, you're not last. So everybody on the Castle Rock Council, that was always the joke, why is Mr. Marlowe always going last? Well, he was the water department, and we didn't have a zoo in Castle Rock. Otherwise, the zoo would go last. Maybe that's a lot funnier with a town crowd, but oh, well. Thank you, Mr. Marlowe. Who do we have next to present? Dan?
Dan Avery for staff. As a broad overview, both of these agreements provide about $14 to $15 million for wastewater improvements on the Highway 85 corridor. The Dominion Agreement provides roughly another $5 million to enable a water connection. That water connection will serve the community of Livers with access to renewable water as a precursor to a presentation from Andrea from Dominion Water and Sanitation.
All right. Director Cole, come on forward and give us your presentation. Hey, folks, everybody who's coming in right now, we're still in the middle of the business meeting. I apologize, we are running late. We had many important items to go over. Please let us get through this so we can get on to our land use meeting, which I suspect there's a little bit of interest in with the folks in the room today. So please be quiet, let us get through the remaining items, and we will get to land use as quick as we can. Director Cole, please.
Thank you, Commissioners. Andrea Cole, C-O-L-E, General Manager of Dominion Water and Sanitation District. We're located at 9250 East Costilla Avenue. I would also like to echo Commissioner Layden's comments. We definitely appreciate the diligence and hard work of staff, in particular Dan Avery, on getting this across the finish line. So looking forward to providing just a brief overview of why we're here today. So as Dan indicated, the total ARPA commitment for this particular portion, the northern portion of the wastewater solution for the Highway 85 corridor, will be for Dominion, and it is for the total waste, a new wastewater treatment facility to be located at the existing Roxborough wastewater treatment plant. It'll be renamed Chatfield Basin Water Reclamation Facility when completed. In addition, there is a Forest Main and Lift Station at Livers for treatment at the Chatfield Basin Water Reclamation Facility in county capacity of .2 MGD in the northern wastewater system. In addition, Livers Renewable Water Line, Master Meter Vault, and Corrosion Study, Forest Main and Lift Station will be funded and built by Dominion by 2030 unless new development accelerates that timing. So this is just a little bit more details on the wastewater components of the project. Dominion is committed to building an approximate 1-MGD wastewater treatment facility that will exceed the $20 million ARPA funds. So basically, we're anticipating that that project will be around $30 million, so it'll be additional money that will be paid and contributed to by Dominion. And this will serve the existing community of Livers, as has been indicated, the county EVOX site, as well as potential future county maintenance facilities in the area, Sterling Ranch, and new development along the Highway 85 corridor. As I indicated also, Dominion is committed to building an approximate $7 million Lift Station in Forest Main to connect Livers to reliable wastewater treatment, in addition to decommissioning the existing wastewater lagoon, as Mr. Marlowe indicated earlier, in addition to the septic systems that are leaching into Plum Creek and ultimately Chatfield Reservoir. There is some concerns with the lagoon as well, and this project will help clean up that lagoon. Connection will be made no later than 2030 by Dominion, and as I indicated earlier, a funding by new development comes, then that connection can be made within one to two years. And then just a little bit on the water lines. So this provides connection to renewable and reliable water supply in a timely manner to Livers, and so this is just the alignment. Supplies are available within one to two years. The corrosion study has been completed, and this has helped provide information to that community as well as Douglas County on the needed distribution water system replacement that's needed in Livers, as well as this, the water line project will provide water supply and fire flows for future public facilities in the Waterton area to include that EVOX site as well as potential future county maintenance facilities. And this is just kind of a blow-up of the map that Dan had in his presentation as well to just show the connection to the existing Livers tank, as well as the connection, the red dot is the connection point where the new lift station will be, which is near the existing wastewater lagoon. And then where you see the green L to the far left of the page, and that red, green and red line that goes over to the new Chatfield Basin Water Reclamation Facility located on the South Platte River. And then kind of just to put a bow on this, I just have two slides left. This is, we're talking about wastewater. I do think it kind of gets lost in the shuffle that wastewater is, it's all one water. And so really, Mr. Marlowe also highlighted this in terms of keeping those reusable supplies within Douglas County, and I just wanted to hearken back that this is in compliance with the 2040 Comprehensive Master Plan that Douglas County has adopted. And then finally, I think this slide helps kind of show the collaboration. I think we've heard a lot through this business meeting about the partnerships that are really important in Douglas County, and this is how we get really key projects like this across the finish line. And so Douglas County, with the $20 million of ARPA fund, is building this, the Chatfield Basin Water Reclamation Facility, it's a mouthful, and having that .2 MGD capacity. Also, with partnerships with private development, we are able to bring on that connection to Livers sooner than that 2030 timeline. And really, the true benefits to Northwest Douglas County is that connection to Livers for renewable and safe drinking water supplies, connection for Livers to reliable treatment for wastewater, decommissioning that existing outdated sewer lagoon, and provides for future connections for new development of up to .2 MGD. And I do not have any more slides. I am open for questions and urge your approval of this amendment. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Andrea. Questions for Director Cole from the board?
Thank you, Andrea. I do have a question. So in the packet, it says, "Under the agreement, Dominion Water and Sanitation District will use the funds to construct the Chatfield Basin Water Reclamation Facility on land it owns by December 1st of 2027." Is that correct?
That is correct. So the ARPA funding will be fully expended by the 2026, December 31st, 2026 timeline, but we are anticipating that the plant, again, Dominion is contributing additional funds to get that plant completed, and that we're anticipating that the plant will be online and operational late 2027, early 2028.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that the ARPA funds will be spent by the end of 2026.
That's correct.
Thank you. I have no other questions for you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Layden?
You know, I appreciate this, and we just echo the same sentiments. I mean, I think early on in these discussions, we had over $300 million in requests for 68.2 in ARPA funding, so getting down to the right bit to accomplish what the county hoped to do with its partners is really exciting. You know, and I think part of the more specific request was, you know, really asking the leadership at Dominion to act as a regional partner, and you all have stepped up in such a significant and amazing way throughout the county to ensure that we're all meeting the needs of those we serve. So thank you for this. I will ask, and maybe this is a question for staff, do we have input from the Water Commission on either of these two projects?
Commissioner, your colleague, Commissioner Teal, presented this project to the Water Commission and did receive a favorable recommendation, yes?
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Andrea, I have no questions, but a whole lot of congratulations for all the hard work that went on on this. I really appreciated how we were all able to link arms and work through, work through all the, all the issues that came forward for both of these elements of this big plan and get it, get it done to this point, and now we just need to get it done, obviously. Any other questions for Castle Rock Water or Dominion?
I do have a question for staff.
Please.
So Dan, as, once these are approved, will the county just write a check to these two entities? If not, how will the county fund or expend these dollars?
That's a great question, Commissioner. One of the considerations through this process is how to expend those funds. Both agreements allow for an escrow account that the entities can draw from. What we anticipate happening in practice is that, so that the county can hold the funds as long as possible and continue to accrue interest, we will advance those funds as needed to maintain a certain balance to the entities, and they will draw down those funds based on invoices that are approved both by each respective district and the county.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Chair, I'll just, thank you, I'll just add on to that, that I think that's a really important consideration, and I think it's important that the county retain oversight and accountability for these funds, and paying as needed, I think, is a critical component to this. And whether our savings and refunds and reimbursement, I think that's important to capture as well. So I appreciate the county just remaining actively engaged on the entire process and monitoring that, and of course, providing reports back to the Board of County Commissioners as progress continues.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, at this time, we're going to go ahead and open the floor for public testimony. So I saw a whole lot of people come in when we were about halfway through this item. Folks, this is the intergovernmental agreement between the town of Castle Rock and Douglas County for the Highway 85 wastewater collection and treatment system. You heard, many of you, the presentation that we did at the same time for Dominion's part in this project. That IGA is our next item. Is there anyone who would like to give public testimony for the Castle Rock IGA with Douglas County at this time? Jill, come on forward. Jill, once again, please give us your name, tell us where you're from.
Excellent movement, board. Good timing. The Imperial Valley and Coachella Valley in California, the Colorado River supports nine states, if you can believe it, and Imperial, the Imperial Water District in California has denied the contract with the federal government to fill our, to deny buying water, which we have 15 million foot acres or feet acres, if that's how you say it. So 7.5 million supports the upper Colorado Basin and then the lower Colorado Basin. The Rocky Mountains feeds goes into, you know, eight states and the tip of Mexico, and also California, which consumes a lot of our water. So when I'm looking at an article they just put out midnight tonight, or I guess 12:03 AM, it's August 13th, so this morning, it reads as such, "Southern California's Imperial Irrigation District, the Colorado River's biggest user, has signed off on a deal with the federal government that will leave sizable volumes of water in the basin's, sorry, the basin's largest reservoir. The Board of Directors for the district, which serves the Imperial Valley and part of the Coachella Valley, agreed Monday to leave up to 700,000 acre-feet of water in Lake Mead through 2026." Good timing. So in return, the Federal Bureau of Reclamation said it would provide funding for these conservative conservation efforts for up to 300,000 acre-feet per year from 2024 through 2026. Despite its location toward the end of the Colorado River's path, the Imperial Water District has some of the most senior and legally protected rights to the waterways resources. The district's annual Colorado River allocation is 3.1 million acre-feet, a significant chunk of the entire 7.5 million acre-foot share of the lower basin states of California, Arizona, and Nevada. The upper basin, Colorado, Wyoming, Utah, and New Mexico, also has 7.5 million acre-foot annual entitlement, while Mexico receives 1.5 million acre-feet each year. I swear, there is no excuse for inaction anywhere along the river. The conservation- The conservation agreement materialized as Colorado River Basin states scramble to come up with a unified, long-term plan for waterways' future. As current, temporary conservation agreements are set to expire at the end of 2026. Meanwhile, officials in the four upper basin states are currently negotiating a new deal with the federal government that could provide credit to protect against future potential cutbacks in the exchange for conservation water. And then, at the end, it says this, last 14 seconds, Hanby, the one, California, emphasized the importance of the deal calling upon other districts to follow suit as the region prepares itself for a drier future in the Colorado River Basin. And as far as the Imperial Irrigation District Agreement is concerned, the related conservation programs will include an expansion of the region's Existing On-Farm Efficiency Conservation Initiative, as well as the idling of certain water-intensive crop cultivation. It's essential to have clean water, and we do have radium chlorine high levels that affect testing levels and much more.
Thank you, ma'am, for your testimony. Very much appreciate it. Is there anyone else who'd like to give public testimony on this IGA between Castle Rock and Douglas County? Seeing none in the room, Troy, do we have anyone to give public testimony on this IGA between Castle Rock and Douglas County?
Thank you, sir. I have no online comment.
Very well. Thank you, ma'am. Bringing back to the board for action. Board, what is the pleasure?
I have a motion to approve an amended and restated intergovernmental agreement between the Town of Castle Rock and Douglas County for the Highway 85 wastewater collection and treatment system in the amount of $14 million.
I'll second that motion.
There is a motion and a second and a discussion. I'll be saving my comments for our second item before we adjourn business meeting. Hearing none. We have a motion and a second. All in favor of this IGA between Castle Rock and Douglas County, say aye.
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 Aye, and the IGA is approved. Thank you, Mr. Marlowe. Appreciate you being here to help us out with it. And so, Dan, let's go into our next item, which is an amended and restated intergovernmental agreement between Dominion Water and Sanitation District, acting through its Sterling Ranch Water Enterprise Fund in Douglas County for the Northern Douglas County Wastewater Collection and Treatment System, the Livers Renewable Water Line, Master Meter, and Corrosion Study in the amount of $20,482,400. Dan, you're presenting, but I believe, do you have anything that you haven't added yet?
I have nothing else to add, other than in response to some of the public testimony we've heard, these systems will enable both water districts to use and reuse portions of the, of the water generated through these systems to extinction. Good conservation happening there.
Yeah, kind of our answer to the information about the Colorado River Basin we were provided in public testimony. Very well. Board, do we have any questions? Back to Dan on this element, or, or you, that was presented with the agenda item before.
I just think it's important to be clear that we're not giving either one of these entities a check for this amount of money, that the county will keep, be keeping this money, and then, as there are invoices to show the work has been done, then we will be releasing the funds. I think that's important to have on the record.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Layden, any further questions for Dan?
No, nothing further.
Okay. I have nothing further. At this time, we'll go ahead and open the floor for any public testimony on this amended and restated intergovernmental agreement between Dominion Water and Sanitation District. Is there anyone who would like to give public testimony at this time? I am seeing none in the room. Troy, do we have anyone to give public testimony on this amended and restated IGA?
I have no online comment.
Okay. Thank you, Troy. Bringing it back to the board for action. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair, I'm pleased to make a motion to approve an amended and restated intergovernmental agreement between Dominion Water and Sanitation District, acting through its Sterling Ranch Water Enterprise Fund in Douglas County for the Northern Douglas County Wastewater Collection and Treatment System, the Livers Renewable Water Line, Master Meter, and Corrosion Study in the amount of $20,482,400.
Second.
All right. There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I'm glad we were able to do this. I seen, I recognize a few faces in the room, and folks who are from Livers that are in the room, I'll tell you what, when we started working on this, you guys were central to what we were trying to do. And so many times, you know, when you have a project like this, there's the engineering, and the math is not forgiving. You've got the financing, the financing is not forgiving. The only thing that can be messed around with is the public policy. And over and over again, we were going back through plans where it was the public policy to make sure that Livers was taken care of. That could have been compromised, I assure you. That came up many, many times. And I'm pleased to say, we were not willing to compromise that. So, and by the way, I see a couple, like I said, familiar faces. Thank you for your help and assistance as we went through this process, but more specifically, Andrea, thank you for doing the yeoman's work on this one and getting the engineering right, getting the financing right. Mark, Director Marlowe, once again, thank you very much for partnering with the county to achieve these goals. Any further discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of this amended and restated intergovernmental agreement between Dominion Water and San and Douglas County, please say aye.
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 Aye, and it is approved, unanimous. All right. Moving as rapidly as we can, I know, folks, you, many of you came for the land use meeting at 2:30. Please forgive us for being tardy here, but as you can tell, we did have many important items in our business meeting. At this time, I'm going to pull the board as to citizen comments on our business meeting. We do have a land use meeting and public hearing to get to. Board, I'd like to, I would like to pull the board about skipping citizen comments at this time.
I know there are several people.
Well, I'll just say that we, I think we'll have a lot of citizen comment, and we do have citizen comment for every single business item, consent agenda item, and business before the board, and we've got a very significant public hearing, which will involve a lot of citizen comments. So, I'm pleased to honor the commitment of time that those who are here to testify about business have made.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner?
I would just like to know if there's anybody here who would like to speak, just so they could be recognized for being here, and then, we can move on with the rest of the meeting.
Okay. Commissioner, I agree. Is there anyone here who came for the business meeting, not our land use and public hearing, which we're, we have yet to start, that would like to speak and public comment at this time? And Commissioner, I don't know about you, but I am seeing none.
Thank you. I just think it was important to recognize them if they had been here.
Roger that. Absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner. We're going to move on, and Commissioner comments, Commissioners, any comments at this time?
Excuse me, Commissioner, this is Troy, your host.
Yes, Troy.
Would you have one online request?
Very well, Troy, let's go ahead and take it, let's go ahead and do that.
Okay. Thank you, sir. I'm going to unmute Jill. Go ahead. Jill?
If everyone can hear, oh, can everyone hear me okay now?
We sure can, ma'am. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Jill Lamond. I'm coming virtually from Michigan, and I do certainly want to be respectful of everyone's time. I'll keep this short and sweet. I'm here, I represent Evolve Technology, which is an advanced weapons detection company. We're currently partnering with your STEM school, and I just wanted to introduce myself to make this a little more personal, let you know that I am here as a resource. I'm our head of education here at the company, and this is very personal to me. I was actually an assistant superintendent prior to my role at Evolve, and I experienced a school shooting in Oxford Schools here in Michigan. So, I understand what that does to a school community, and like I said, it's very personal to me that we work together to continue to restore that sense of safety to your community. And I wanted to introduce myself, and I wanted to just talk a little bit about some of the success that we have had at the STEM school, but then also the excitement at the idea of being able to help protect the entire district and making this weapons detection solution sort of turnkey for all of the Douglas County schools at the secondary level. And so, I just, I wanted you to know, you know, it's not just the technology, it's an entire team of individuals who want to support the schools. We're in over 1,000 schools across the country right now. On a daily basis, we screen approximately 635,000 students going into school buildings. And as with any sort of disruptive technology, we certainly have those who have pushed back and have challenged us. I've been with the company for about two years. I've watched us grow, I've watched us learn together, and at the risk of sounding too cheesy, we continue to evolve over time. But I will concede the rest of my, my time to the group, but I understand you're in a rush to get to other business, but I did want to introduce myself and just say, I'm a resource here, and we are excited at the opportunity to hopefully help even more schools there in Douglas County.
Well, thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your comments. Troy, do we have anybody else online?
I have no further online comments, sir.
All right. Thank you, Troy. Bringing it back to the board for Commissioner comments. Commissioners?
I'll just.
I'll just reference the individual that just spoke from Evolve, and, you know, today in many respects is quite historic, you know, approving tens of millions of dollars per water wastewater along the 85 corridor will benefit generations to come, long after we are gone. And that's the kind of work that our citizens expect of us. Several years ago, and I referenced this earlier, Commissioner Thomas and I received a call about the STEM shooting alongside Commissioner, late Commissioner Roger Partridge, and we were whisked to the AMC area in Highlands Ranch for a press conference that was national. And I was only a few months in office. And fast forward to today, you know, six years later, and I'm very proud of the work of this board to partner with the school district to provide that three-legged stool, mental health, school resource officers, and physical school security, and we went through a very belabored process to do that in partnership with the school district. But, you know, a goal of mine that I know is shared by many is to convert the stigma associated with STEM from, from a place of tragedy to a place of triumphs. And I'm convinced that STEM school is probably the safest in the state, if not the nation. They have the SROs, they have the mental health professionals, and they also have the physical school security, as represented by Evolve, which is in Disney World, at the Academy Awards, it's at Coors Field, it's everywhere, including schools. And it really has, has evolved, to continue the pun, to be quite prolific and successful. There's no such thing as a perfect system, but that pilot did get a survey at STEM school and received overwhelming favorability, I believe 90% favorability, from parents, staff, and teachers. And when we toured, I pulled students directly and just said, hey, how do you feel? And they, they just said, hey, I feel, I feel safe at school. And it's simple, but, you know, as a father of three kids, sometimes the simplest statements are the most powerful. So, I'm very thankful for the work of Evolve and look forward to future discussions with our colleagues at the Board of Education to expand this program, to ensure that not only STEM, but the entire school district in Douglas County is the safest in the country. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner?
I'm just going to say that we finished a great fair last week, and it wouldn't have been possible without the great staff that worked on it, the Fair Board, all the volunteers and the citizens who showed out to have a good time. So, thank you so much. It was really a great fair.
Absolutely. Good fair. We're, we're late on time. I'm going to go ahead and reserve my comments for hopefully a later date. So, moving on to other business. Is there any other business to come before the board?
No other business.
Thank you, manager. County managers report.
Nothing today.
Thank you, Doug. All right, folks, let's adjourn our business meeting. Our next business meeting will be held on Tuesday, August 27, 2024, at 1:30 p.m. For all of you who came here for the land use and public hearing, we are going to take a quick break. We are going to flip the room for the technology to get our next meeting going. We're going to open up the back wall so that we can, some of you that are standing, you're going to have an opportunity to have a seat in our expanded hall. So, thank you all very much. We are adjourned.